All right, I'd like to call the order. Village Council Special Meeting, October 28th, 2020, at one o'clock. We have first up on the agenda is adoption of the agenda. Obviously, we can't add anything, so any-
We want to let, uh, make a motion to allow Bob Markelies to participate remotely.
Okay. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That'd be good. So, we do have a quorum of Councilman Markelies and Mayor Pro Tim Vandenberg here, and we don't know if Andy will be joining us, or hopefully Jamie will come on board, so, shortly here, so. And again, so the first up on the agenda is Discussion of Potential Action Regarding Location Proposals, Infrastructure Needs, and Ideas for Village Hall and Marvin Heritage District. So, how do we want to handle this? I think we left you guys with, you know, kind of our ask of what you guys would probably need to see or would like to see, and then kind of go from there, I think.
Okay.
Discussion, I think we've had. So, thank you for putting all this together for us, so we can take a look at it.
Appreciate your time. I'm Tim Fincher, this is George Dewey. He's got some things together that we think might work, or at least a starting point to start the discussion is to incorporate a town hall into a village center here at the corner of Waxall-Martin Road and Newtown Road. Several things out. Rog, he's got, oh, that came outside?
Yeah.
That's good on that.
Yeah.
I'm gonna let George join us with Ashton Crawford, he's the CEO there. He understands development, and he's been to several meetings here with me in Marvin, and I think he's got a feel for what we're trying to do. So, George, you'll tell them what he's got, what he's come up with.
Thank you, Tim, and Mayor, and council members. So, we met, I don't know, three, four weeks ago. We had a really old plan that dated like 2014, 15, and you guys asked us after an hour or so of conversation, can you come back with something that we can incorporate to Town Hall, or Village Hall, as you may call it? And so, what we did, we incorporated some elements we heard in the meeting that y'all, I think, liked, which was having a village green, maybe having a village hall around a village green. I think you're, and we agreed, having the Town Hall, particularly given its smaller size, having it in the back was going to be not appropriate for it, so we tried to come up with a spot where we could position it in a location that we felt was appropriate on the site. And really, this today is our first stab at coming back with something to talk. This is an open conversation, as you guys are well aware of. Mr. Fincher's owned this land, has been in this land for hundreds of years, and, I don't, it's hundred, right?
Yeah.
Not hundred.
Two-hundred-and-fifty, yes.
Yeah, so, I don't think there is a, from his perspective, a rush to do something like today. I think it's more or less, this is a big deal for the Village of Marvin, and we're trying to come up with a plan to let it evolve into something that works for the village and works for the Fincher family as well. And so, our goal here is to get your feedback, and see if we can continue to advance the ball for having a village hall on this property. We're not, and we're, so that's kind of, I guess, maybe some context about sort of a month ago, or three weeks ago, when we met. I think that a couple of just important points, the access points are kind of, particularly the one on Waxall-Martin Roads, they're sort of set. DOT is going to require offsetting driveways from, the driveways that are across the street, so the driveway is there, and then at Venetian Way Drive is sort of a set location. The right-in and right-out in the middle is sort of equidistant between the roundabout and that drive, so that's sort of a fixed point. And then the entrance drive off Newtown, that'll need to be looked at closer by your transportation in the state, but-
To see if they would allow a left turn into there? It looks like.
Well, we've included that, we have not talked to the state, and I think in our last meeting, if I remember right, y'all were like, "Well, this may become a town road," and so it may be your jurisdiction, even though currently I think it's a state road.
Yeah.
So, anyway, there's some, we're not sure, but that, this is just sort of a placeholder currently for that access drive on Newtown Road.
DOT did leave us, when we did the, when they did the roundabout, we told them we needed a left end, come in that direction-
Correct.
-from there, and they said they would consider-
That's right.
They won't ever say yes or no, but, anyway, it wasn't a definite no, Rog.
That's right.
So.
But I mean, even if you couldn't go left in there, you just come around the roundabout and go right again, right?
Yeah, you could.
I mean, that's not that much, right?
It's just more accessibility, if you got somebody on Newtown Road that said, "Oh, I need to run into the Town Hall," or whatever, instead of going around-
Yeah.
-and missing it, and doing a, they still got, they could still make a left. It's really close as far as what their number of feet they gotta have on it, and-
They require four-hundred, and it's like three-hundred-something, so.
So, that's-
And it could be pushed down some, and maybe the church would be willing to view that as a positive for them as well, and that's a, and that can shift in either, you know, in fifty, sixty feet, or a hundred feet, if need be, but we can certainly talk about that.
We're not here. It's going to the sharpie, or a highlighter.
And those buildings, the buildings there are so retail, really, I mean, those could be retail or local, you know, office, you know, as well, I would think. I mean, we don't, we're not, we have no tenants in mind currently, you know, we know that there's a large bias towards local and that sort of thing, and so we would be angling for that along with office as well, a small sort of local office where someone could live close by and have an office as well. But, and then the Town Hall, kind of at the point of the village green, we talked about a specialty store last time, and we put one on here. We, I know last time we talked about like a reeds or something like that, but that's, that's been included, and then I wasn't sure, we know that, I think there was a mention about maybe the ordinance might provide for some limited amount of kind of townhome, but because of the driveway, because of the residential cross from the site at Venetian Way, we felt like it was most appropriate to have a transition from single-family to sort of a higher-end, you know, smaller townhome type of product, and then into the commercial piece of the project, but that's, you know, those are all for kind of discussion and so forth. So, the BNP's are located in locations that where the property falls naturally, too, so those are kind of where they, where they need to be. And the thought is, maybe if the Town, Village Hall goes first, you could potentially construct the right-in, right-out off the Waxall-Martin Road and the Newtown Road entrance, and you'd have kind of a block that includes the two retail buildings and the Town, Village Hall first, with the village green potentially there, but without having to run infrastructure through the entire property, it might save some dollars that way, without having all the road network in right off, right at the beginning. So, that's just one consideration as well. So, I think, you know, the idea is this is more of kind of a quaint, smaller, retail, office, village hall type of project. Architecturally, we haven't really gone there yet, but, you know, it would be of a scale that would be appropriate for downtown Marvin. I particularly like the old general store, I guess, across the street, and if we could somehow incorporate some elements from that building and into the project, it might be nice. Y'all had a rendering of your village hall last time, which had a more of a residential feel to it, so we would want to try to- Be respectful of that as well.
So, we got an update on that. Is this from the architect already?
Yeah. That's just a stab at it.
That's just a stab at, when we met with the architect, we came up with that, it's a little more fit in the, I guess, theme, if you will, whatever you want to call it, and, but that's what we're looking at, and they've had to do a little bit of a redesign based on what we want, but we also changed some things inside as well, to be a lot more flexible. Let him, he's going to fix pictures right there.
Is that a, yeah, so that's, that's, yes, fish roos, and so it still maintains some residential articulation, but it's, but it's a commercial build, it's a commercial building, which is good.
Yep. I mean, that's our first stab at it, we haven't even brought this before our council yet, but that's a, an idea. A lot different, because I think the other one looked a lot more residential, if you will.
Yeah.
This, this has a more, I don't know if I'd say stately feel, but more-
Yeah.
Not that they were getting, so we spent a little time, Kim, myself, and the administrator, and our architects kind of revamping this a little bit, what we thought we would want, so, okay. You know, I have a few questions, I think, number one, that, and maybe this is for a road hit, and as the land stands right now, what, and if we were to change the zoning to some sort of light commercial, and then people get scared with retail and commercial, they get scared with that name, but if we, depending on what that is, and what we're trying to draw and attract to that, what would that parcel that they have yield right now from a square foot standpoint?
Well, you have thirteen acres, so you could put thirteen single-family homes on it. It's a pretty flat piece of land, so there's probably not much, that would make you need to put less than thirteen. But in the next week's Marvin Heritage District Committee meeting, they're going to be talking about all of these factors, the housing types allowed, housing density allowed, commercial density allowed, and it's really interesting that these timelines have kind of matched up. So, none of these things that are more dense than single-family housing are allowed, but this is going to be what's in the agenda to be considered. You got your single-family, your single-family detached, above-commercial, three to four in a row, five plus in a row, multiplex, and more than five in a row. Those are all the things that we would ask the committee. I already know that it's possible some of these options will get zero votes, but it's good to ask, and then the council will be able to take that, and the planning board's assessment of that committee vote, and then determine what should be allowed and what should not be allowed.
And does the, does the planning board have any plans to kind of, in parallel meetings, think about what they're going to, would want to?
Yes, yes.
Obviously, this committee goes to the planning board, planning board kind of discusses it, it just gets, I think it's more people involved, more of the landowners involved, more of the residents involved, than what we'd like to see and what works.
Right, exactly. So, the committee is a more diverse group of people, and having them deliberate this will get us a more precise answer of what the design could be allowed for. And then the planning board, at their next meeting, will assess what the committee discussed, compare it to the land use plan, and give their recommendation to council, and that will be a cycle that happens every month.
So, I think the tricky thing is, and George, maybe you can help me with this, is we all may know what we want, but what we want may not work in the sense that it'd be successful, like, I think, were you with me, Kim? We were knocking on doors one time, and there was a retail expert that, he just said, you know, for what he, what he knew, what we were talking about, he says, "It's never going to work, because you just don't have the traffic." That, that was his concern, the traffic. Well, I think the traffic's there, the sixteen thousand cars or whatever that goes through there all the time, but given what we put, the task on you guys, putting those retails, is that the, the, the minimum you would be asking in something like this, or is it, you know, have you thought about, because I know we can put just about anything in there, and we'll get to that when we talk about uses, but we could ask for the sky, the problem is, is that what we're asking for may not work for you, and the last thing I want to do is do something where it's not successful, and we have-
Breaking buildings.
Breaking buildings, and you having a hard time to rent, especially now, I mean, we're all thinking in COVID terms, you know, who's opening up businesses and that sort of thing? So, this process may take some time, but I like the thought of starting with the Town Hall, because obviously we would need it, and then those two retail shops. I'm a little concerned with the setbacks on the, if the one retail, on the buildings there, and this is just first glance at that. Also, the, Kim, those buildings, have you thought about turning those buildings? I mean, from the street, they don't look, when you're looking straight on them, they don't look that wide, I mean, but is there a thought to, to turning those buildings, or does that make sense, or, I mean, I got a lot of questions, I guess, but, you know.
Like that, or?
Hey, 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 means-
Horizontal.
Yeah, like-
Yeah, not necessarily there, I'm just worried about the setbacks on those two, right, so, so close to the street there, and, you know, the seven thousand, you know, maybe that can be addressed on that. The twenty thousand, I think, you know, and just talking to, when we did a ribbon-cutting ceremony for Publix, you know, I was asking the question, do they have like satellite-type places that are smaller? And I think they toyed around with that, but their minimum is twenty-eight thousand square feet, which I thought was going to be way too much for something, and this is the opinion of one. Specialty store, I don't know what that entails, I mean, what, what could it be? It could be multiple stores within there.
I think they're thinking like a reeds, or something like that.
Right, right. And I don't know what reeds, do you, did we look at that? What is reeds?
Yeah, the reeds was thirteen thousand square foot, but that included two other stores that are inside it, like Subway and a nail salon or something.
Okay, okay, so then that, and that was a thirteen?
It could be like, yeah, it could be ten thousand square foot for a-
So, I guess my question to you is, this with the square footage that you have, obviously it's a lot more than what we would allow currently, but we're going to get to that probably in a week or so, but is this the minimum you're, you would need to work with when you look at this from a retail perspective, and, and being able to, you know?
So, let me start with a couple of positives. You know, one of the positives is, is I'm not going and buying this land as a developer, contracting, paying money for, and then having to figure out how to build buildings, everything on it. We have a family that owns the land, so there's no debt on the property. So, that's a, that's a positive. The, the other positive is, if there's a way to get some of the uses there now, that we think would drive some revenue, like a townhome, then, then we can take those funds, reinvest them into the buildings, and make the buildings look nicer, put it into the landscaping, hardscapes, and do some things, and make the project really attractive, and not have to drive rents up to the point where we're driving out potential tenants that would want to be there.
Sure.
So, there's, there's a couple, there's a couple things, those are some positives, I think, that, that are here. The, one of the down, one of the challenges we have is Union County and Marvin, Wesley Chapel, Weddington have built large lots, kept the size of the homes larger in size, larger lot development. The base zoning in Charlotte was like R3 for years, even R4 was sort of a common base zoning, three to four units per acre, it's different, so the density's different. So, the density around this site, while the traffic may be large, it's a lot of commuter traffic, people going to different directions, and they're going two, three, four miles, whereas like Colling Place, at Colling Row, and we talked about this probably past time, our average draw may be a mile, a mile and a half, the average draw for this is going to be quite a bit further. So, to get to, to get to your question, I, I don't know in terms of minimum amount, what we need to make this work right now. What we've, what we're hoping is, there will be some small ancillary retail and some office to go along with the village hall, and then we'll have to kind of see how it, it goes. And the good thing is, the land has no debt, so we can, it can evolve without having to take down the entire piece of property and kind of build it all at one time, because that's not, that's not what's going to happen. I mean, we don't, I have no clue who the specialty store is right now. We don't have any idea. But I can tell you this also, it, this is, this, the density of this is really low for the size of the site, compared to like, again, I'll reference Colling Place again, that is ten acres, and it's a hundred thousand square feet. This is forty-six thousand square feet of retail office and Town Hall, and seventeen townhomes. So, we're talking about half the square footage on thirteen acres, we have on ten with seventeen townhomes. So, it's not, it's not a very dense project. We can, we can look at making it denser, with some smaller buildings, and try to figure a way to kind of fit them in there, and, but I think what this is, what this process is all about, is trying to see how we can evolve this plan into something that you guys feel good about, and the community will feel good about.
So, do we have a projected number of, I see a lot of parking spaces and stuff, and obviously you're going to look into, is there a projected number on the parking spaces? Just looking at that? I mean, I-
Yeah, it's, it's probably-
That's a function of the retail side, right.
It is, it's, it's five per thousand right now, roughly, and I think, it was actually, when Land Design came back with their first draft a week and a half ago, it was higher than that, I was like, "Look, we need to, we need to densify this a little bit," but we could probably get away with four per thousand.
Okay.
So, we could put a little building, and a little less parking if you want, I mean, there's some movement there we can, we can work with.
Looks about two hundred spaces.
So, my initial is, I mean, I think this is a great first, like, stab at it, I mean, I like it, I like where village hall is, I like the village green, I like having some retail around it. I did think that there was a lot of parking, so, you know, if we can get another retail space in there, and a little less parking, I'm, I'm definitely open to that. The, I think the town, the word townhomes is going to freak a bunch of people out, and I think we have, we're going to have to be within our, what we allow per acre rate.
Residential.
Right. We can decide that it could be more for this district.
Okay.
Everything is up for discussion.
Okay.
But that would apply to the entire district?
Right.
Right. So, you know, the number may be a little higher than I would like, that's just me talking. If we could get it closer to, you know, the thirteen, like, you know, to go along with the thirteen acres, that would make me feel a lot more comfortable, and if it were, maybe, not all the townhome-
I'm calling them attached homes in my memo.
I, I like attached homes, that's, that makes that sound a little bit better, to try to not freak people out, because I just, I mean, I just, I know, I mean-
I, I think either way, they get filled up quickly. I, I think they're sold like that, just because of the, the cost to get into Marvin, and this is for the younger group, it's a stepping stone, and then, you know, they have a family, and then they move up, or for the elderly, quite, you know, over fifty-five would, would be appealing to.
Oh, you can move in there.
Tom Scott, Tom was like, told us at a house meeting years ago, Tom Scott lives over here, and then he told them, he said, "I love Marvin, my kids are out here, I don't need this five, six thousand square foot house."
Right.
And he said, "I would love to buy one if somebody would build it." So, all you got to do is walk across the street.
And then the problem comes in, is when they, we did the, you know, all fairness, and nothing against this group that did the fifty-five older, a resident was asking me, "Hey, where do I go? I want to stay in Marvin."
Really?
And I said, "Well, we got Amber Meadows coming in." When they did the math, there was really no, I mean, because the homes started, everyone getting to the home, the base home, and then all the features they wanted it, before you know it, they were looking at a seven-hundred-thousand-dollar, you know, place, which they're beautiful places, they're just on a lot smaller, so for them it wasn't, and it was funny, because I went in unannounced, too, and talking just to the agent there, and she's like, "We don't call it downsizing, we call it rightsizing," meaning that they don't have to take care of the land, which, which, you know, there's, there could be some appeal, and we'll see what the committees come up with and stuff, but to your point, George, in, in-
But that, but that was, that's my first thing, I think it's, I mean, I like it, like, I like this stuff laid out.
That's good feedback.
I, I, you know, but, those are my only, like, notes. I'm actually okay with the twenty thousand square foot, because I feel like you could probably do a specialty store with like a, you know, like a Subway, not Subway, but like a sandwich shop and a nail salon, or whatever in there.
Coffee place, ice cream place.
Yes, yes.
What about fitness?
I mean, I think it has to be fun, the fitness place.
I mean, I, I, yeah, I think that that's going to be under uses, and, you know, what would we allow that's not going to be offensive, I think there's, there's-
But I don't know that I want like one tenant in twenty, like, I would rather, if, if you can, have it like, you know, a reeds, which is around, I guess, ten or twelve thousand square feet, and then have like a couple other things in there to, to continue to bring different people in.
So, so the tricky thing is, given that they own the land, and it's not like he's a big developer and stuff, and it's like, okay, so we're, we want a certain look, which is we're going to require a cost of motif, or, you know, vibe, whatever we're trying to do, so to your point earlier about, you know, these may being a source of, because once they build the townhomes and sell them, they're, it's out.
Yeah.
Okay, but it's, it's a source of funds, because the return on investment is really in the, the retail stores, we're renting those out and stuff like that, so that, that all makes sense to me, and I'm, to Kim's, you know, first stab at this, you know, with you guys doing this, is, you know, this, something like this could probably work, I may, I may play around with the, the square footage, to Kim's point as well, on the, on the large one, even this one, if it means backing it off. I love the fact that as you come into the Village of Marvin, there's Town Hall since in the back, and you have the green village there, so, and, and I think it's just what, what it looks like as far as vibe, and we can get to that at some point, but also the uses that we're going to allow in there, and whether we rename townhomes and stuff and all, I, I don't know, but I, I know they would, I would imagine they would be, they would be, we would require an upscale kind of feel and look of that, and they, by default, would be, you know, something that we could get our, our hands around, or our thoughts around, and stuff like that, but it'll be interesting to see what, what transpires at the committees of people, is what they want, because again, we can ask for whatever we want, but if it's not going to work, from a, you know, and it's going to create, where you're going to have empty slots, it just doesn't make any sense at all and stuff, but the, the only thing that popped back out of me is the, the amount of parking spaces, so that was like, and, you know, you, you want to create, right now, it's just a flat lot and stuff, so, we're actually probably, my thought would be bringing in more trees and stuff like that, again, there's, there's costs associated with that. I think there's a nice buffer on the backside to the property owners behind, and to the, to the left looking at the picture and stuff, so.
I mean, my, one thing that I would, you know, Tim would always turn to me when I'd come down to see him, and he would say, "Oh, this is downtown Marvin," and, you know, having, you know, going up to Cashes, I was friends with that cache, I told you all that, and I used to go to the farm, I didn't know this was downtown Marvin. Like, you drive through, you didn't really know it was.
Right.
And, and yet, if you were from around here, you kind of knew it, but by, maybe because of the old general store or something, I mean, we want, I mean, from my perspective, I think we want to, we want, when someone comes down Newtown Road, or Waxall-Martin Road, or Marvin School Road, you want them to get here and say- and say, "Oh, we're, we're in downtown Marvin." And yet, still respect the, the rural nature and the, the nature of the area, but, but you know you've arrived somewhere that has, and I think, uh, from a design perspective, a little higher density residential, not a lot, I mean, almost 17 units, but in this case, but maybe it's a little less, but it, it adds to that sort of, I feel, I think you, you, that you're, you've arrived someplace-
This is destination.
Yeah, this is downtown Marvin, you know, um, and I think the retail or the Village Green, uh, the Town Hall, it all add to help create that sort of, um, look that might, you might be looking for, um, as it starts to build out over time.
And that was pointed out by the group that we had, they're saying, "Look, you're gonna need some, an area for, whether it's age restricted, whatever we call it." I mean, it, in my view, it could be open to anyone. I don't know if I would wanna restrict it, because I would wanna give a younger generation an opportunity to, to buy in there too, just because of, you know, your kids can go to a school and stuff like that, because we, we're out of it. But, you know, I, I, I'm with you as far as calling it a townhouse, and, you know, that will certainly scare people and, you know, 17, whatever that is, but, so do you, do you foresee like, on some of the, when we call them retail, do you-
Can I stop?
Yeah.
I didn't mean to interrupt, that house on the right.
This one here?
That one.
Yeah.
Where is that?
This is in Bluffton.
Bluffton, South Carolina, okay.
I thought Bluffton was a pretty good example of rural looking, house looking, commercial examples.
Yeah.
I've done a lot of research and looking around and seeing, you know, denser housing types and commercial that could still architecturally look like it belongs in art.
It's got a kind of a low country look.
Yeah.
If you'll go to, this is somewhere Ken people, over here on Elm Lane, it's the old Robinson house. I don't know the address, but it's right near.
That's the Robinson Farms.
Okay, that's Robinson Farms, that's, that's another part of the discussion, George, that, yeah, that's, we need to bring that up in a minute, but that house is almost a minute ringer in my mind of the old Robinson house up here. There's a Robinson store that around the turn of the century was the main place, everybody in this part of the country went to go shop. It's a little bit like Remfro's, except bigger. You could get your mule, uh, horse collars there, trace chains, plows, you could get a coffin if you had to bury somebody. It had groceries, your coffee, it's, it's the old Robinson store, it's gone now.
Oh, it's gone now.
But, but the house in Mr. Robinson's film is, look, look, I think, um, are you, is this on Elm Lane?
That's not Elm, but that's right next south of, uh, St. Matthews.
Yeah, get on past St. Matthews and go like you up there to Park.
Further north.
Where you go, go before you get to, uh, uh, Mr. Blakeney's old house. You know, I don't know if you know where it is, uh, anywhere.
So are we north of, uh, what's the name, Rodrick Hill, uh-
You got, you got, uh, there's some apartments-
The Valentine Commons.
There's some, uh, it's on Elm Lane, going towards, uh, Johnston Road on-
Oh.
On Elm Lane.
Is it past Valentine Commons?
Uh, yes.
And before 485?
Past, no, it's on past 485 and Stonecrest, you're going away from all that.
Okay.
Out on Elm Lane.
Uh-huh. Going the right way?
I can't tell you.
Are we going north or south?
Yeah, you're going the right way.
You're going the right way, yes.
So, so it is north of 485?
Yes.
And it's on Elm Lane?
Elm Lane, it's on the right, and then there's a, there's a convenience store, where the old store was. It's, it's before you get to the Morrison Y, uh-
We're south.
Other way, go, go, come back this way.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, it's south.
Come back this way.
Go back across 485.
All right, keep going.
Ford Y?
Yeah, go Ford, yes. Now, now-
There's a-
Okay, those are, now look across the road from that, that might be where I'm talking.
Ah, yeah, 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 I remember, yeah, I, I remember that house.
Okay, look in there, can you, yeah, come back, this, this is the old house in there, can you get a picture of that, Rowdy?
This house up back here, or?
That's it.
That's it, right there, boom. That's the old Robinson house.
Okay.
Mr. Walter Robinson built it probably around 1900, 1890 or something. Uh, I know there, anyway, we all, some of the Ken people, they're, they're still living there, they still own that house. It's a cool house, and it's very much a period of this. It looks a lot like that one you just saw in Bluffton. So if you wanted something that is very representative of this time, turn of the century, that's it. My two, I hate it, my cousin's got my grandparents' house, and the house my grandfather was born in, they had the double doors in the front, you know, for funeral caskets, you always put them in the front hall in those old houses. That house is a whole lot like, like, my Aunt Birdie's house is down here where the guy had the, uh, built the horse farm down here, not on the South Carolina line, my Aunt Birdie lived there, they knocked it all down and built that big, big old house where, and the horse farm. So there, that's, that's the look. If you want something, but was period correct, that's it.
So if you're going in that, if you're going in that direction, uh, and you want office or retail, then you've gotta have a commercial storefront, I mean-
Oh, yeah.
So you've gotta go something more like-
You gotta go something different.
Like that, that has a storefront versus-
I like that.
Yeah.
I like that.
That's small town feel.
Yeah.
That right there.
Yeah.
We've done a little bit of studying on it, we're just, we have land that's quite where we eat. Um, this is actually, it's funny, he pulled out, this is the Autobahn shops in Polley's Island, very similar to the one you just pulled up in Bluffton.
Okay.
The Hammond shops in Polley's Island.
Yeah.
I just don't know if we can, you know, you can get really expensive architecture that doesn't have as porches and no storefronts, it just, it's tough to incorporate that in a, in a office and a big townhouse.
And that's okay to not to have like a big porch on the front, that's okay, like, I'm okay with not, you know, cause I, I mean, I like that, I think, I mean, I mean, I would-
But you know, this, you know, this, like, this stuff's expensive, I mean, you got mullions, you got wood mullions, you got pass-throughs, you got two-story, uh, architecture, whether it's, the second story's activated or not, you know, is questionable, but it's still scale, um, you know, that-
Well, I think you have to do-
That's, I mean, you know, look, and, again, I think Mr. Fentress committed to reinvesting in the property and not having to maximize every dollar out of this, but it's, at the same time, you don't wanna charge somebody $35 a square foot in rent, and then have another $4 in pass-throughs, next thing you know, you're $40 a foot. And you've gotta do, you know, you know, 3,000, let's say you had a 2,500 square foot restaurant, uh, and you're paying $40 a foot, that's 100,000 in rent, and if you wanna be 8% of sales, which is pretty typical for a restaurant, means you gotta be doing a million 250 in sales. And if you look at the density of population and different options, you know, you're talking about, I mean, that's $500 a square foot in sales, I mean, that's gonna be tough for somebody to make sense of that.
Okay.
So you really, you really, you really need to be in that mid-20 rent range.
So in this area-
So, I mean, that's just, we'll deepen the details.
What, what is the rent range in this area, right here? Like, if I were to go right down the street in South Carolina where you have those, I'm sure it's gonna be a lot less expensive, where they have the, um, woodworking shops and stuff like that, but those are basic steel buildings that are slapped up, there's woodworking in there, there's a cheerleading group that's in there, workout facility across, can you give us an idea of what the cost per square, whereas compared to like a Waverly, which no one would give me an answer over there, what the cost per square footage over there, but they've got a lot of-
So Waverly, Waverly is gonna be like $35 to $45 a square foot.
Okay, okay.
It's gonna be in the high end of what I described.
Okay.
Um, the new Publix, I haven't called, but they're probably quoting folks, uh, $30 to $35 a square foot is my guess.
Okay.
Uh, which is, but you know, this is not going to have, at least initially, that sort of Publix, uh, or one of the Publix at all, but it's, it's not gonna have a Whole Foods or Publix, it's not going to be expanding its trade area to draw people in, and that shopper that goes 2.1 of the numbers are, 2.4 times a week the average shopper goes to the grocery store, that's not gonna happen here.
Right.
So, no, the tenants aren't gonna pay what they would pay in a location like that. So we've gotta build a building that is, uh, where we can lease for 20, 25, and, and the sales will be a little lower, the traffic will be a little lower, um, but you don't wanna compromise the integrity of architecture, so there's a, we're gonna have to figure that balance out.
Hold on, let me ask a question. So that's, that was gonna kind of, so you brought that picture, but you said that's really expensive to build something like that.
Yeah, I was, I've been doing a little, I, I was listening to what y'all seemed wanted, I've, I've printed off some of the pictures that resonated, and I've looked at a, I guess, a, a pre-draft of a, a plan for, where there were some pictures and different ideas, um, of different communities that, architecture of different communities that you guys liked.
So if that's gonna be very expensive to build, what are examples of something that's gonna be in that $20 to $25 range?
Well, I'm-
Like, is that, I mean, is that, I don't even know if you can answer that question.
Not yet.
Okay.
I think what I would-
You're like, no.
I think step one for us is to like, determine like, what's this plan gonna look like? What's the first building to go in? All right, it's gonna be probably the ones on the either side of the town hall, cause you're, you're gonna wanna create that space initially. And then we'll, we'll price it, and, uh, and we'll do that relatively quick, and I'll say, "All right, in order to build this particular building, we, we either need to have 15 townhomes or 10 townhomes," or, you know, I mean, it, it's a yin and yang kind of thing that we're gonna have to deal with, cause whatever, if this building costs $150 a square foot and a normal building costs $125, we're gonna have to make up that difference-
Sure.
-to, to be able to afford, to keep this economically feasible for, for a tenant to come in and be successful.
Mm-hmm.
But we're not there, I don't think we're there yet, like, we're, you know-
Well, I mean, yeah, just getting our head around, people getting comfortable with this, the amount of square footage in the retail space. Now, do you foresee, is, and maybe this is getting ahead of my skis here, but do you foresee some of these retail being filled by office space too? Uh, the, the, meaning just maybe in a, a law firm or something like that, or is that not what this would, I mean, do they-
Yeah, you said that earlier.
You did? Okay.
I, I personally think that, uh, there, it may be become more important, uh, that they just wanna live in a smaller, like, not work downtown, but they may don't, they don't wanna work at home.
Right.
Kids running around, I've had the feeling, I mean, you know, you can't, can't continue, so, yeah, I might want a 500 square foot office, a thousand square foot office close to home, where I don't have to get on Province Road or Ray Road and go all the way up to Charlotte, na, na, na. So, I think there may be a debate for that.
I, I think of our former attorney that has a place down in Waxaw, and I'd just be, I'm curious to find out what they're paying per square footage for that rental, but there's a lot of little spaces, there's a clock shop down there, there's all these different, kinda almost buildings that are separate, in, in some cases, and others that are combined with other things.
This is on Rodrick Hill?
No, this is actually Waxaw. When I look at Waxaw, I go downtown Waxaw, I'm just thinking the area, what's closest that has some sort of retail, cause we really don't have any office buildings around here close, I don't think.
The Valentine.
Yeah, Valentine's gonna be your closest thing, and, you know, you can compare our rates there, um, the traffic, it comes into play, but I guarantee you, there are a lot of individual entrepreneurs that may have an architect firm, or may have something that this makes a lot more sense to be, that works.
A lot of, low, some of like, have low real estate offices down here.
Yes, exactly.
So we're working on finding a house, you know, down here.
Right, right.
I think we build a lot of office.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna move this over to remotely here. Bob, do you have any, uh, questions?
Comments?
Comments?
No, I mean, initially, it's an impressive, uh, layout, uh, initially, um, you know, basically what you and Kim have expressed, I kinda feel the same way. I was looking at the positioning of the, of the retail spaces, uh, and of course, what falls into that is the design, and, um, Rowdy, you've, you've done a nice job of going to Bluffton and, and, you know, showing the, you know, what that could look like, or what we were looking at on Elm Lane. Um, sure about the townhomes, uh, from the standpoint of, of density, and, and, you know, we need to talk about that, but I mean, the townhomes, the picture you showed, uh, again, Rowdy, you know, they're attractive, they look stately, I think more, you know, I guess, uh, uh, stately in the fact that it's more of, of maybe what the community, you know, supports, um, you know, and then, uh, really the buffering, I guess, you know, how close that is, and, you know, to the road as you, you know, but initially, you know, it looks, look, you know, like a nice layout.
The, um, the one thing I, you know, learned, this was probably a couple of years ago, but the average retail space is 1,500 square foot these days. So just because of the Amazons of the world and stuff like that, that may have gone less, I don't know, but just as I was listening to a symposium about how towns and areas are being developed, but that retail space has gone, so you could potentially see three or four places in, in one 7,000 square foot.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, you could see a flower shop, you know, maybe a little antique shop, that kind of-
Candy shop.
Candy, I don't know.
I'll, I'll mention, I'll mention one thing that we've done in the past, when, when we had something as part, as part of a plan that, um, was questionable, you know, the community or the, the, the council were like, you know, "Ah, we're just struggling with this," but we really wanna maintain the architecture, the quality, the architecture and the quality of the scale that we're talking about. We've made commitments that we will build this before we build this. And so in other words, um, you know, if, if we felt like the townhomes were something that was gonna be the most successful thing on this property, day one, and we said, "All right, well, we, we can't sell a townhome before we build a, or we can't, we have to tie the townhomes to building the retail around the village hall." Now, when you know you're getting some of the retail offices around the town hall, and what we're doing is we're basically selling the townhomes and putting the money directly back into those buildings, and, and, and Tim's not, you know, taking the money and not building anything else. Like, I think if there's a way we could commit to that, and, uh, we've done little things like that in the past, maybe not as directly related to two different buildings, maybe like a, an architectural feature that we committed to put in before we did something. I don't see why we couldn't commit to, you know, a certain architecture that everybody really likes, it's more expensive, um, and it, but if we're able to get the attached housing, or we can refer to this, and we can-
Go, go attached housing.
We can, we can get that and make the commitment that we're going to put it into these buildings to ensure the integrity and the quality of everything you build around the town hall, I think that's, it may, that may be a helpful, a selling point in the, in the overall, um, plan.
But it has to happen kinda together and with a certain timeframe, because I've been enjoying a present use value farm, right?
Yeah, right, right, right.
And I'm not gonna say-
Tax rate go up.
Yeah, tax rate go up, me sitting there, "Well, when are we gonna be up?" Well, we have another meeting, and, you know, we-
Right, right, right.
Goes on for years.
I got a shovel in the back of my car, we can go start now.
We can start, okay. I know you want to get, but you see where I'm coming from too.
Absolutely, oh, absolutely.
And you either have to have some help on the taxes, if Union County comes in and say, "Well, this is a developed site now," you know, whatever, whatever, there'll be some time, wouldn't you say, George, on, on that, because, uh, uh-
Yeah, I'm just thinking about tying-
Making money happen on nothing.
Not, not profiting off of necessarily the townhomes, but putting the value of the townhomes back into the project to make it better for the community. That's really what I'm trying to get to.
Yeah, and I, that, yeah, that's, I, I wanna-
Cause that's what you want.
That's what I want, and it, and it, but I, I don't want it to be a ten-year plan or some, you know, you say before it's completed.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and I think, you know, I used that word, that was a swear word a couple of years back. It's that you're actually-
Don't say it, don't say it.
You're actually looking at-
Don't do it.
Within this, a master plan.
Oh, God, I'm sorry, oh my God.
The master plan that says, okay, this is what the, because to the point about how many residential homes we put in there, we gotta let them know from a buying standpoint, here's what's coming. It may, and it may come in conjunction and it may be, you know, okay, townhome goes first and then these two spots go, and then this is set aside for that. But these guys know, and all that does is increase the value of their properties when they go to salad and stuff like that. But that's gotta look good too.
It's gonna look good, so that we got, wait, when can you build our building?
Right.
We want to be in moral.
Right, right, right. Um, uh, yeah, my, my biggest thing, and, 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 help me out, just looking at this picture, and I don't know, what are the setbacks on the linear park to the retail space there? So that center, what is that setback approximately, would you say? Looking at that.
I don't think I'd probably notice the smallest one.
I'm sorry, what was that?
The setback on the retail that's in the center of the building. Give me where the linear park is, a setback to the parking spaces in the retail.
Well, currently, our major thoroughfare setback is the eighty-five foot minimum.
Okay.
Um, but of course, um, you know, you see, you see the Crane Store has a thirty foot setback. Scott White's house has a fifty foot setback. So if we were to say, we want infill to look like existing developments, we might allow a thirty to fifty foot setback instead of eighty-five.
Okay, but this, do you have an idea what that is?
Um, you know, quick, I'll give you-
And that, and you may not have it, but, but that looks, that looks tight, but that, and I don't know how tight that is compared to-
In the, in the first committee meeting, the, the idea that these buildings could be up to the road like some, some traditional downtowns was not really viewed favorably, like, like a ten or fifteen foot setback, you know, like if you go to downtown Waxahachie or Fort Mill. It's basically road, sidewalk, building, and that was not viewed favorably. So, we'll probably see at least a thirty to fifty foot setback. Um, but eighty-five, I think, is excessive for a downtown.
Right.
Like, think about how far you have to walk.
Do you, do you know, and, and I don't know, because we haven't really worked with Union County, and maybe I'll wait for, uh, Mr. Fritzer to get back. But from a tax standpoint, um, I know a lot of times states, counties give incentives to have something like ten-year incentives that we're not gonna, you know, you're, you're not gonna see that. Do they do stuff like that? Is that, I, there was a gentleman's name that I guess that's kinda behind all this.
I don't know about those kinds of incentives, but the historic department of the state, they do incentives. If you're, if, if, if we establish a historic district, there's a pretty big percent, like fifteen percent something state, and then something like that similar for federal. Uh, they will help you, um, renovate and build, um, new things if, uh, if they find it meets the criteria. Um, and, and from our perspective, and this is why I wanted to pull up the timeline, um, I probably have to re-explain this when Mr. Fritzer gets back, but-
Just wait.
Um, the, the idea is that we want to make it simultaneous, um, the tax district and the zoning, so that, um, yeah, I'll wait.
So I'm guessing the width of the building, maybe fifty-five feet, which puts that building in, maybe fifty-five by one twenty-seven, plus, you know, and the width of that building is about the width of the distance between the property line and the building. So maybe fifty, maybe fifty feet from the edge of the right away there, or edge of the property line.
Which one?
Uh, the building that's at the right and right out. I'm guessing that's probably, this is a guess, I'm off of scaling, trying to scale this somehow. It, it looks like it's maybe fifty feet.
Mm-hmm, that's fair. Um, fifty is probably something that the committee would-
And just for, uh, for purposes of, uh, what would you say the Starbucks is over at Kohl's from the-
Um, I can actually take this and kinda measure it right now and see. Oh, it's like seventy-five feet actually. Um, the one in the right out, this one over here is closer to fifty, but this one is like twenty-five, thirty feet.
Okay.
I mean, also though, you, 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 I think, I think you, you don't wanna have it so far from the road where you lose that-
Yeah.
Architectural curve. Like, if you look at Robinson Farm, that building is less than fifty feet from the road. As long as you have appropriate landscape buffer, sidewalk, tree skate-
Yep.
And, you know, you can, we can find a balance, but I don't, I don't think you wanna move it too far off the road and, and risk having it feel, I, disconnected from the, the curve and-
I agree with that.
There's also a thing, sometimes with this, maybe I'm wrong, but just being a consumer out here, when you drive around it, you, that's why a lot of towns and cities and villages or wherever, have put the parking on the other side. So you're a little bit, I'm gonna go in and see what's here, and then I'll see the parking or whatever. You won't have so much parking exposed from the road.
Right, yeah.
And, and it lends a little bit of, it's a warmer feeling than having all the stock parking and, anyway.
It's forty-three feet there?
Yeah, we have forty-three, forty-six here, so forty-something for the, the Starbucks.
Figure it out.
Yeah, forty-three.
Yeah, forty-six here, forty-three here.
Okay.
That includes the sidewalk and landscape buffer and-
Yeah, we're talking about edge of curb too, edge of building, forty-six, which, uh, I think-
Maybe I have more of a problem with what they did with it, but-
Right, right.
You need the trash cans on the street.
Yeah, that and the lack of foliage in between.
That's, I tell you, that's one of the biggest issues when you, when you have four-sided buildings.
I'm sorry?
When you have four-sided buildings, what happens is, is you have to put your dumpsters, there's no back housing longer.
Right.
So you gotta put your dumpsters somewhere on the property and close them. And then, and then the restaurant that's busy, they have those rolling things. Well, they don't wanna roll them over to the trash can every time.
Right.
So they leave, they leave the trash can there until it gets full, or two of them, and then they move them. So you sit there quite often, and it's not, it's not a great visual thing, but it, it's not a great way to do it. You can't tell your tenant, every hour you're gonna get a dump of trash in the trash can, I mean, it's-
Okay.
Yeah, there they are.
Yep.
Yeah, same.
I've got a question for George, if I can.
More foliage. Go ahead, Bob.
Um, George, and, and it's just, just require me, and especially with today's economy. When we went to the Publix ribbon cutting ceremony, um, you know, they had the outline of the buildings that are waiting to be occupied. And as we found out, they're kind of still getting offers, opportunities, or whatever, they're starting to go through who occupies those. Uh, but, you know, basically, it was a, in other words, they were all done, they were all there, it was part of Publix and the facade, and, and it looked attractive, you know? But, you know, as you look into them, that's still, I don't know, there wasn't anything inside. In today's climate, do you wait till you have a commitment, uh, does a developer wait till they have a commitment on, uh, the location, property, before you start building? Or do you build first and then, you know, have opportunities of people approaching? What comes first? Just think-
That's great, it's a great question. It's, it ties into what I was talking about earlier. When you have a anchor tenant, like a Publix or a Whole Foods, um, like we, you know, you build that tenant and the tenants will come. And, and, and we've, we've found, you can probably build somewhere between eight and fourteen thousand square feet of ancillary retail space with every good grocery store, Harris Teeter, Publix, Whole Foods, and you're going to get that leased. Now, that's in a normal environment, right now, it's gonna be tough, but it will happen. So, in this case, we don't have an anchor. So, where I've been going, where I, where I've been going with this is, we don't have an anchor. We can't afford to put full price into these buildings unless we got some way to subsidize those buildings. And, and I'm, I'm looking for ways to try to reduce our debt on these smaller buildings. And that's where I was, I was tapping the townhomes.
Detached homes, detached homes.
Detached homes.
Detached homes, whatever they are.
So what we would end up doing is we would build a seven thousand square foot building. We would try to keep the rents reasonably low. We'd have some money to help them outfit their space and really work to attract some tenants into those spaces uh, through lower rent and through, um, uh, TI. But in a typical deal, we would build an anchor and, and we'll build a space, it'll come.
Yeah.
And it all, it, it-
And you, you, they typically, Bob, just allow the build-out for the re, whoever decides to take that space. They're gonna maybe say they need fifteen hundred, two thousand square feet, whether it's a restaurant, they're building out the inside. You're just, you're doing the shell, correct? For the most part?
Yeah, and we built, we built McKeith Farms with Publix, we built Connie and Ray, we built Wesley Chapel with Harris Teeter. And, uh, those centers, those properties are ninety-five percent leased all the time.
Right.
I mean, those grocery stores and-
No, I, I was wondering, because I know in my past, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead, go ahead.
All right, I was gonna say, in my past business experience, especially, uh, in the hospitality industry, um, you know, we would look for a major anchor of some sort. Uh, either the, the shopping center would have them, whatever the major attracting anchor would be. And then we'd say, okay, this is, because this is the kind of person, you know, I say, person has a business, this is the kind of, of anchor we wanna be around, this is what reflects what we do. Um, the reason I was asking was I thought, okay, so if maybe you had a specialty store, and let's say, whoever it is, whatever it would be, you would, you would have that first. And then really what would happen is nothing but green space. And then at that point, as people start, you know, approaching you, you know, you would say, hey, Bill, we can do this to suit, this is the facade, this is the way it's gonna look. So I, I was just wondering, you know, if, if, if as you sit, start getting going here, will maybe there for a while be more green space, you know, just because you're waiting, you know, to get it? And I didn't know in today's climate, you know, who knows, okay, uh, you know, which way to go. But you answered my question, I appreciate it, thank you.
So I, I think the takeaway from that, Bob, is, I, I don't think we're looking to, I think what these, you are saying, and correct me if I'm wrong, is, we're not necessarily focused on the retail. So, the, the direction for, the takeaway from, um, these upcoming meetings that are coming in, Planning Board, this group, what can they get their head around and get comfortable with, whatever we decide to label it, as far as what, how many of those can we get in there to get from a, we're not billing, we're not dealing with a multi-million dollar organization that can just plop in things and have the funding for that. But this is, this is what's gonna affect this, is what I'm hearing.
Yeah, and I think a lot of people will have a misconception, this is like, this is incredible location, we're gonna be able to lease this thing up. Man, I would hope so, but that's not the case here. It's gonna be, it's gonna be tough. And my hope is, is if we could, you know, if you could make fifty thousand dollars per townhome, let's say, and there were, there, uh, even if there were, if there's twelve of them, that's six hundred thousand dollars. And that's almost, what, ninety dollars a square foot on a seven thousand square foot building? Ninety dollars a square foot that we can put towards a seven thousand square foot building is, is meaningful. And it allows us to keep our debt calls down on that as our smaller building, so we can lease, we can, we can, we can carry them, we can take the time that we need to get, like, the tenants in there and work through it. Uh, if we go out and build those seven thousand square foot buildings and they cost us three hundred dollars a foot total of a bill, then we're gonna be over two million dollars and carrying a loan, trying to figure out how long it's gonna take to get the tenants to come in here. It's just, um, without having an anchor, it's a little more challenging.
Without an anchor, the, the places George has, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but my, my looking at it, is that, uh, whoever you're borrowing money from, the first thing they ask, well, who's your anchor?
Yeah.
You know, if we don't have an anchor, well, how are you gonna fund this? You know, or how, why? That's a strong point.
But you got, you got no, no land-
Ain't got any debt on the land.
And you got some cash to put towards it, you can get your leverage below fifty percent.
Then we can-
Then you can get a loan.
Then we can borrow it.
Right. So, to the meeting that's coming up, make sure, you know, if we show them this plan, I know they're saying seventeen, thirteen is what would be allowed, but, you know, what can we get in there? And what kind of, what kind of square, I didn't get that, these residential homes, what kind of square footage are we looking at as far as lot size and potential builds? Are they, would they be two-story, would they be, you know?
They'd probably be two-story. These kinds of townhomes are probably twenty-five, hundred square foot, three thousand square foot size.
So what you guys were thinking?
Um, don't know.
Okay.
We're probably too early on that, but-
We would probably call some of the best guys in town to do this sort of thing. We would study it, next year we got a really good partner.
Can I make a, can I make a suggestion? Like, only, again, only cause I like the number thirteen, cause we have thirteen acres. Right, if you go up, yeah, right where you are, but go up towards the BNP at the top.
Mm-hmm.
If you could put another one right beside it, not in the BNP, but right beside that last-
To the right of residential homes.
Yeah, no, go to the left.
Right alongside the residential homes, where it ends.
Yeah, what are you looking?
I want you to add, I want you to add another one.
If it's possible, I don't know.
I want you to add one right here.
Uh-huh, uh-huh.
And I want you to take this section here and make it another retail building.
Like, kinda like that?
Yes, and then take those out and make, and, cause then you've got thirteen along that backside, and make that another retail building.
Okay.
I don't know if that would be something that might work, cause then you'll, you know, you'll still get thirteen residential units. I like that, better residential units. And then another opportunity for some retail. I guess, I mean, I don't know if that would work or not, I was just looking at it and saying-
Yeah, we, yeah, I mean, we could get that.
Is that, is that more appealing to you, to get an extra retail in there and for this, from your purposes, from your standpoint?
I'm going on the presumption that there's a lot higher demand for residential attached housing than there is for office retail right now.
Okay.
That's, that's assumption I'm, I'm assuming I'm making.
Right.
And so with that assumption, thirteen acres, my feeling is, is that the more townhomes, the better. But if, if appetite is thirteen, or whatever it is, and that's what it is.
Right.
We'll just have to put our, hit a paper and figure out what works, you know?
Okay.
Um, this is how I intend to ask the question at the committee. Um, what is the density that you would consider as, at most? Residential only is like Odell's and Previsus' properties. Mixed use with civic donation would be yours. And then all other mixed use would be, you know, everything else. And then someone could say, okay, you know, that's fine to that, that's fine to that, that's fine to that, you know, and then something like that. I'm not trying to suggest what people will say, but, um, this would kind of separate you out from the other, um, I guess, properties to allow, if the committee wanted to do so.
Okay.
And, and this is all, just, just to be clear, and to make sure on the record, this is, this is, is with donating the land for us to build our building, and, which is five thousand square feet. And then we would be responsible for the road in and out initially, to cut that, is that how we're, you know, cause if, if we had to go ahead today, say, and we were able to build-
We talked about this, the expectation is, is that-
We gotta have some help on, yeah, building the road. We, if we're donating a place-
Yep.
It's a prime, it's a great spot for, for the village center, for the village hall.
Sure.
And, and put it there, we would need to get the road built and, uh, like Rowan, we were talking at one time too, get your power, water and sewage dug, do it all at once rather than-
Yes, yes.
Than, 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 uh-
That is, that's what I told up the timeline here.
Oh, yeah.
Isn't that right, George?
Yeah.
Yeah, but what, what, what we'd be responsible for in, in the beginning, so we pull that map back up. You got the right in, uh, uh, right out, right there, that whole-
Yeah.
That's what we would be responsi-, just, just to be clear, that's what the recommendation is. The, the, the property for the, and then, you know, um, what, what, what else from a parking sample? We'd obviously have to have enough initial parking for that, is that something that-
Yeah, but I don't know, we gotta figure out how much we're giving for the town hall. I mean, if they're taking in, some of that parking's gonna be used for the retail folks.
Absolutely.
Uh, so, I don't know, we need to, I, I, for the-
I mean, it would be enough land for them to build their town hall and put their parking there.
Put their parking, how much parking do you think you need for the town hall?
I think we're talking about twenty-eight spaces.
Yeah, I think twenty-six or so was what we used as our minimum for this site here. But, that was our own rules, we just needed to apply it for ourselves, cause it's residentially its own.
Right.
Well, since the retail, but they're gonna be, having to have that, it might be something we have that parking lot owned communally, so-
Right.
So that they know they're not- So that they know they're not restricted, that they got, plus the park, right?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So before.
Yeah, I, but, I just wanna be eyes wide open in on this, and what we're, I know we talked about it before, but, you know, and I know the road would probably be on us, just get our head around that. But, you know, again, the value I see in this is, you know, it's property we can build on, we don't need to improve.
Right.
Um, it's, it's, it's donated land versus, you know, we're spending our bu-, our whole budget on improving land where the other location was, so there, and, and it creates a sense of gathering, if you will, from that standpoint, so. I just wanna make sure we're on the same page with that, that, that exchange there.
There'll need to be, there'll need to be a, a storm detention pond.
Yeah, in the beginning, right.
So we have to run a.
Contribute to that.
We can reserve that area for, for the pond, but you'll have to run pipe, you know, a temporary storm pipe, until we build and we end up moving it, but, um, that's just, it's a cost. Uh, and then extension, utility extensions, uh, whatever landscaping you want along those roadways. And then, hopefully with the improvements that DOT has made, there's not too many off-site road improvements, but that will be something that, over time, will need to be looked at, turn lanes into the.
We'd like to have, and y'all would too, have a left turn, you know, you know, off of Newtown.
Off of Waxhaw Barrow, the left turn off of Newtown would be nice.
With the DOT, it would be good for the town hall and for the whole access to the village.
You wouldn't, I don't think necessarily need one, only because if they don't allow it on Newtown Road, because you could, you could loop around whichever direction you were coming from, and loop around and get to a right-in turn at the right-in, right-out there. So you wouldn't necess-, if you're coming from this way, you would just go three-quarters of the way around and make the right-hand turn to get in. If you're going straight that way, they may not allow us to make the left-hand turn.
They've left it in the gray area, when we talked. All I'm saying is, it would be good to have Marvin get on board for their Newtown Hall DOT. We need a left-in for.
Right there?
All our citizens that are gonna be coming in there, so they don't have to go around and around in circles, or, you know, it's the time to ask for it. The reason we couldn't get it, say, well, you build anything now, no, well, then we're gonna leave it like this, and come back to us when you're doing something. That's why I mentioned.
And appropriate distance for that, um, from where it tapers off from the roundabout, was really, I think it got right up next to the church property.
Yeah.
We're showing it a little inside that four hundred feet or whatever it is. Just, we want to keep it on our property from timing.
Yep.
But if, if, if there is a leftover, I think it's gonna have to be extended, and you're gonna have to work.
I think, I think we ask the DOT first, and then if they say no, then we may have to go to church, ask them for a little extra. It's not a lot, no, just like fifty feet in most.
And, and I know there's a gentleman that's involved at Union County level, when, for economic development, is there, I was asking the question when you were out, but is there incentives from a tax standpoint to get that, you know, states do it for companies, the tax incentives?
Right.
And to your point, you know, all of a sudden this turns to a high tax thing, you don't have any, any source of income. That's certainly not what we want, but there may be, you know.
There might be some funds that, that the state has for towns trying to get their village hall, their town centers, I don't know. There's, you know, that y'all have access to, that, that maybe will help them build the road to it, I don't know, it's.
Most of those are performance-based, based on job creation and that sort of thing.
We're gonna be creating jobs.
We can look into it.
And what, you know, and, and one of the things that I don't think anyone's talking about from an actual aesthetics, and as I drive by there all the time, were our original location for town hall, those for listening on the phone and stuff like that, were there, the location was the town hall initially. If you look at that, there's tons of overhead wires and stuff like that, that we talked to the Union Power, or companies that bury that, to kind of make it look pristine. If you, if we're changing and we're moving to this, I don't think there's anything that's impeding from a visual standpoint. As you come into that, and you see town hall sits in the back, you have no obstruction from any power lines or anything like that, which I think it almost kind of says, this is the start of where, where Marvin.
It's a destination.
It is, yes. And it's just a better look coming into it, versus what we have. If you go and take that other corner, look at all the wires that are coming in right there. And, you know, what we do with that in the end, not sure, because, but I think it, it's gonna be a challenge either way, whatever we do, if it's.
Maybe a little farmer's market down there.
Farmer's market is what they're talking about.
Where you can drive in and drive out.
Yeah, that looks really close right there, when you look at that.
Movie truck Fridays.
Yeah.
I mean, we wanna, I mean, I haven't had a chance to really, like, program this village green yet, figure out what we could do there. But you, I mean, we're gonna wanna have, you know, movie night or something, where a nice food store is getting support, and we, we're gonna have to create energy and activate that village green, so that it's.
That's great.
Bringing people in.
I love that. I mean, I want people to call them, I mean, if we, if we build it, I want them to call.
Right, and one of these buildings, could you project a movie on the side of it on Friday nights, or whatever? Or you could, like in Matthews, they got some cool paintings of, of Fourth of July parade in the twenties or something, that he used to have when they had the stump town thing. They got, and they done it at Waxhaw, with some of the older buildings.
They do it at Ray Farms, too.
Ray Farms, they show them there.
I was about to say the same thing.
You could have a great flagpole, flowers around it, and, you know, buy a brick for a veteran that was from Marvin. What, a lot of different things you could do.
We have a trick or treat thing, especially up in the park. And we just had to, like, all the social media, and all of a sudden, it was like hundreds and hundreds of people accepted.
There you go.
And we were like, whoa.
And they projected, they projected on all these buildings, that one there.
Socially distancing things.
Oh, yeah, I see that.
Right. All right, well.
All right, so what's the, where?
Well, I think from a marching order standpoint, this next upcoming committee that's meeting, the task force we created.
Is that tomorrow, or next Thursday?
And we gotta get Planning Board behind, because that, I mean, that's, I think, that's a, to me, a launching port, because we're not working with a, um, what's the term?
A consultant anchor.
A big store, a big store.
Anchor.
Anchor store, um, and, and what we could get around, given it's thirteen acres, what would we allow? You know, I, I, I just, I, I think initial feedback from me, I think from Kim, Bob, it sounds like you were, um, in favor of what we're looking at. I think it's just tweaking, and this is a, I guess, a starting point, it's not, it's, it's an idea. I think if we present it that way to this committee, and, and see where it goes and stuff, I mean.
I mean, again, first off, I think it's really good, like, I really like it, it's exciting.
I, I would just put residential homes, and then we can, I mean, you know, it's, either way you label it, it's still what it is, whether it's attached or not, but I think, I think there, I think if you look at Marvin as a whole, I was always told, we don't have affordable housing here. This would be something that would always be, I think, a desirable, um, you know, easy thing to get into, whether you're downsizing, rightsizing, whatever you want to term it, or you're someone young that would like to be, um.
They're not gonna be expensive. I mean, they're gonna be expensive.
No, no, I, I know that.
I mean, I can imagine that they would be under five hundred, five hundred thousand dollars.
I, I would agree to that, I would agree to that, and, and that still, but then, then there's the ongoing cost of lots, yards, having, and not having that with, with this, is appealing to sometimes the older crowd. And I, I think it would be a very desirable, um, location to be, you know, to be living, quite frankly. I mean, if you have kids, your kids go to Marvin School, that's what people want. I mean, a lot of people are renting, you know, but, you know, but I agree with you. I think we're, we'd be in that number pretty easily.
So if, if you get good feedback in your next meeting, and you're at a point where you wanna mark up, I mean, get in my car, or Ellie, before you, you can, you can handwrite on this, scan and email it to, and say, here's some additional thoughts. I may, I did make the, the change, or just the idea of putting that retail building there and adding. But if you get to the point where you get enough feedback, we feel like we can do that, just mark on this, send it to me, and then we'll get our land planner, and we'll figure out how we can kind of continue to tweak this.
Right.
I've got, just on my notes, um, uh, labeled setbacks, make sure they're appropriate.
And I wouldn't necessarily use eighty-five feet, that would just be closer to like thirty-five, forty.
Thirty, thirty to fifty, yeah, something like that.
What, what was, uh, the crane?
Crane was forty-three, I think, and Scott White House was fifty-seven.
So like forty-five to fifty.
Yeah.
And then, um, continue to just kind, look at the specialty store size and make sure it's appropriate. Uh, look at the parking, and maybe add, maybe reduce the parking ca-, uh, ratio down a little bit, and see if we can add a little more office retail.
Yeah.
Townhomes, um, thirteen feels better than seventeen potentially, but y'all understand the economics now better, so y'all can figure what maybe works, and what everybody gets comfortable with. And then, um, and then I'm gonna continue to kind of think about the architecture, and how we kind of figure out what, what's an appropriate architecture for commercial, but.
That would be good.
Scale in this location.
That'd be good.
In the meantime, if there's a way to give a cost associated with what that road, because with the other location, we weren't necessarily going to be putting in a road, because it'd be access, and it's just parking in the other location. Now we're looking at a full road, what's that cost? And, you know, I mean, what, what's that gonna be, because we're.
It's tricky to use public funds, though, right? As long as it's public.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because we had that conversation about maintaining it to be private.
Well, that, yeah, we do town, we do attached house residential housing.
Whatever there are.
I mean, it'll be, it'll be, uh, we can make it public at that point, and if y'all want, I mean, y'all want it public or not?
I mean, just that.
Which y'all's preference is.
Well, I think.
From a public to get pile bill funding.
Public to get pile bill funding that could be used for that, versus coming out of the, uh, but it, it's something that.
I mean, normally, normally it's private until you reach a certain amount of build out.
Yeah, ninety percent, we say.
Yeah, which then that doesn't.
But if we're building it, it's our road anyway, so we still own it, so it would still be public, right?
Right.
Yeah, but we'd have to get that, we'd have to get it dedicated before.
Well, she's saying, like, normally a developer builds a road, it's theirs, if we're building the road, it's.
Hours, which we own it, which means it's the villages, which means it's public.
And I, and I, I don't know how much is involved in a road like that, is there, are the curb cuts involved and all that?
Of course there are.
The cost of that, going, that whole loop that we're talking about. You know, if there's a way to get a number on that, that would be good, because I can see residents saying, okay, you know, yeah, you're, you're getting donated land, but we're spending X amount of dollars on the road that we didn't have to put in over on the other.
I mean, it wasn't gonna be a full road over here, but it's still gonna be a long driveway, and.
Not as long as this.
Not as long.
No, but they gotta buy about three acres worth of dirt, fill up the hole, and build, build it on, right?
And, and, so we're still gonna have to build a parking lot here.
Right.
So, and that's like.
Well, we, we, there's parking, parking is both spaces, but we, we knew, and I think most estimates came in around eight hundred thousand dollars for the, to, to be able to build what we wanted to build over on the other.
For a five thousand square building?
Yeah.
But that's because there was so much.
In that corner, there's a reason they donated it to us, hard to build, you know, so. But it's there, but we could do other things that are more natural, farmer's market, that's, you know, more conducive to not having to spend the money, because we have a big building on that corner. So there's, there's trade-offs on both. I, I just see this as more attractive, because now you have more area for, uh, just, back to the point of destination.
Thirteen and a half acre clean slate to do something with.
Yes, yes.
So keep going back to that. The other thing, and I think, maybe I'm all on that, but didn't y'all tell me the last thing? There's a North Carolina Economic Assessment Committee or something that advises towns.
Oh, yeah, DFI, we're.
What's the name of it?
It's called DFI.
DFI.
Called Development, um, Finance Initiative. And, yeah, that's, we're gonna be asking their help to, you know, be on our side and kind of narrow down the scope of this partnership agreement. And they said they'd be willing to do that for free.
Great, I love free.
Yeah, because they're, yeah, because they're based out of the school of government, and that's kind of the free services that they provide municipalities.
And they'll give you some idea of how this needs to economically work for all of us, too.
Well, that's part of our, that's part of our, uh, the Village Center Economic Feasibility Study, which we are also contracting them, but we're paying them to do that one.
Same outfit, DFI.
Yeah, yeah, same people, but we're hiring them for that question.
Hiring them to do that part of it, okay.
Yep, yep.
I couldn't remember the name.
Well, I think we're gonna have to, on that road, I think we just need to, I, I wouldn't get too in the weeds on that right now. Um, I, I would say that if it's a, to get additional funding, it has to be public, then we'll figure it out. Uh, because that's benefits everybody.
Yeah.
If it's, if, if you're having to fund it, and you're not getting any additional funding that's requiring you to make it public, I think it's gonna be easier to keep it private until we've built out, uh, or at least built out some of it. And then we'll dedicate it, and we'll get an agreement, and we'll dedicate it at a certain point in time. Man, because the road, the road, another question is, is like, can you subdivide, like, what are you actually subdividing? And can you subdivide a parcel that's not adjacent to a public road? Some municipalities allow you to do that, as long as you also divide it more than like two or three times. Others require you to have frontage on a public access road, so there's just some things we need to.
Or, just a thought.
Think through it a little bit.
If it's a private road initially, and, and we build it, and then we wanna make it public, and there's a purchase for that, I don't know how that works, but if there's a, is, can you use public, can you use pile bill funds then, if we, if there was a cost to turn it over to make it public? Like, if it's a private, if it's private roads, but the, the tricky thing is, we're building the road. And it's dedicated as private first, but then, when we ded-, when we dedicate it to be a public road, at that point, can we bring in pile bill funds and help pay for that?
Yes, but we can't up to that, we can't do anything if it's private, up to that point.
Right, so we, we would need taxpayer dollars, our own, what we have in our budget, to build that road initially. And it's still considered a private road, but then we're gonna dedicate it to a public road, and we assess a cost to that, and whatever that price is.
It saves money for pile bill to give back to ourselves.
I, I, yeah, I don't even know if you can do that.
Yeah, I don't think so.
I mean, I, I, that's why I'm, I'm just trying to think out loud, how, how, how do you, how do you work around? I mean, I don't know if you'll be able to, or maybe we just gotta get our heads around that we're gonna build that road, it's gonna be our road, but it's gonna be a public road eventually, dedicated.
It'll be a.
And there's no way to fund it through public, public loans.
There'll be an easement agreement between us and, and the village and the town, that says we both have rights to this road.
Right, right.
And they're perpetual, and they're not, the road can't be moved without consent of the other, I mean, it's.
You're right.
Typical Marier agreement.
You know the rough linear foot in the width of the road?
No, I can, I can fit.
I, I can do a little, do a little way more right now, if it's a load.
You know, one thing that we just, we, we, we can, if it's a benefit to everybody to make them public, we'll, we'll do, we'll make them public. But we've had situations where we've dedicated like a important road around a property, and since we manage several properties in, in this area, when it snows or ice, our guys are on site, like, the night before.
Right.
Like, we're there, there, everybody can get in and get out. We've had issues where the town's, well, we can't get hold of her, we don't have a snow guy yet, he's booked and.
We would never even have a snow guy now.
Now, we have to farm that out. Get into the, into the, maybe it's icy. There's just, in a small town, y'all have to be set up for.
Yeah.
Things that you may not be necessarily.
Well, we're talking, we're talking about, we're, we're talking about a, uh, a, a truck for the building.
Now we're just using width.
Um, which you can easily attach the salt, the snow plow.
Yeah, then you're, then you're good.
Yeah. No, but I mean, that's a fair point, it doesn't snow much, but it does snow, and it's usually gone in a couple, but.
We'll, uh, we'll volunteer Bob for that.
Yeah.
What's the width of that road?
Bob's like, what?
I'm gonna have to get back to you on that, I'm sorry. I don't, um, I mean, typically, they're, they're thirty-six feet at the throat, and then they narrow to twenty, twenty feet as you get into the property, but.
That's good, that's all we can get.
I, I'm just trying to get a general cost of, you know, I mean, and, and again, don't get me wrong, we appreciate the thought that, you know, how we want to structure this as far as a public-private partnership, and the land is being donated, but at, at the end of the day, it's still taxpayer dollars that we're spending to build this, and.
I understand.
and what the total cost is gonna be, and, and again, is, is this, is this workable, acceptable, with all the public input meetings? Again, to the public that's out there listening now, these, these are just ideas, we, we're trying to exhaust all different areas of this heritage district that would make sense, and, and again, um, and appeal to the community in, in the same, same breath, so. Any, any other questions or concerns before we...
I just have, yeah, I just have one too, this, I guess it's kind of a council question, we can talk about it more tomorrow, but in terms of our project timeline, we have to hire a civil engineer to kind of encompass some of these things, being the site, the, the retention ponds, the temporary retention ponds, the road, the village green, the parking, all that stuff has to be in our civil site plans, which we need to RFP at some point. Do we have a general timeline as to when we're gonna make a decision on this location or not?
I think to your point, that may be a council question, but, you know, we, we've, we've given ourselves a timeline, I think, and that's what's driving all of this other stuff, but, you know, things take time from everything, from the meeting that's gonna happen next week to find out, this, this may be a hell no from everybody, including, you know, our thing, and, and the rest of councils, we don't have everyone from council here. And we, we don't know that, but I, I'm not necessarily, I know we created a timeline, but I would just say, let's, let's, let's do this right, if that, if that pushes things out, so be it, you know, but...
In terms of y'all, let, let's just hypothetically say we make a decision tomorrow that, yeah, we're definitely doing this, what, what is your timeline from this moment forward, from y'all? I hate to put you on the spot, but I'm just trying, I'm trying to plan my timeline.
Well, no, those are the questions we got, can we do the town dwellings? Can we do the extra building, the retail building? Can we, I mean, those are the thing, and then what kind of architecture, what do you want them to look like? So I, I don't know if it'd be fair to, you can't put...
You know, you can just establish the steps, I mean, you know, so you've got some plan, the, the village needs to go through, determine what, what they wanna do on this property.
Right.
And if that dovetails, we're getting the village hall there, and once that's decided, which it sounds like you're probably a month, I mean, you got a week, meet next week, cause I mean, they'll know after that, and maybe they'll know after that. So then, once that, y'all come back to us and say, hey, we, we think we can get a plan that looks something like this, then we will go back and we will, and we, we're spending some dollars here in time to do this stuff, but it's not a big deal. But, once we get to that point, you can say, we can go back and then get a plan that's more refined, then we're going to, uh, we'll probably do a little civil work, but maybe two or three weeks of civil. Then we'll have to come back, and then there'll be a presentation, then there's a rezoning, I guess, that takes place, and a random understanding, and all the things that go into a diva, how it, it may work, so this is, this feels like to me Thanksgiving, Christmas.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, we're, we're dealing with months here, I think.
Yeah, I, I...
But if we're all kind of moving in the same direction, and all we're trying to do is tweak some of the finite points of it, then we can be moving forward with our civil engineers in terms of what we have RFP out on ours.
Right, and, and what's key in this upcoming meeting is whoever's gonna be leading that meeting, and Christine, I don't know if you plan to be there or not, or whatever, but what we're, what we're here for and what we're learning about not having the anchor store, and really the driving force to be able to afford to put the look we want in these retails, really is, is dependent on what we can get our head around, as far as number of residential buildings, because then they'll take that back, and, and they're gonna get X amount of dollars for the, for the land, they use that to reinvest into the building of the retail, and this just progresses on that, but that's, I think, the key, we have to learn first, that is planning board okay with it? When's their next meeting? Okay, but this, this group that's gonna meet, maybe reports as a reporting device to planning board, planning board says, you know, this looks good, you know, maybe we can do this, and gets back to council, council gets to a point where we say, okay, we're comfortable with this number on the lots.
That's exactly how it's gonna go.
Okay.
So, I guess...
Does that make sense to you all? Okay.
My question is, if we could decide anything tomorrow, if we could, we could say, yeah, we're gonna do it, or no, we're not gonna do it, we say, yeah, they still haven't decided if they're, if it makes sense for them up to the point that we get to this uses, architectural design, and all that stuff. Now, we, and, and that's not determined to be decided until end of this year, and then not approved until April. So, that being said, I guess, are you, you guys okay with conceptually, like he, he mentioned, the planning board's okay with it, conceptually, the strategic, planning committee's okay with it, conceptually, council's okay with it, but it's not yet approved until this April, does that make sense, what I'm asking?
Yeah, well, I, I, I think, I won't speak for Tim, but I think, you're not, I mean, I don't think he's going anywhere, I mean, like, we're not in a hurry to do anything, and I think if you're asking us how quickly we can move, once you come back to us and say, hey, this is the, this is the programming of this property, it's X amount of this, and this, and this, and this, then we'll need probably uh, three weeks or so to put together our numbers, we'll, we'll do the same thing, we'll call to build, preliminary foot the road, storm pine, grading, parking, buildings, we'll have to hook up with a townhome, attached town residential develop, development company, and figure out what those costs, and really put our pen to paper on this, and that'll allow us to be able to come back and then say, all right, this is what we can do in terms of, um, contributing towards some of the additional infrastructure that's gonna be needed, the village green, the, I mean, there's a so, I may be going all along here, but I think that's kind of how, uh, I'm thinking about it, if that makes sense to you.
I think we, we gotta know what y'all wanna put in the grocery cart before we can tell you whether or not we can go with it when you get to the cash register, if you wanna, we don't wanna talk grocery store, but we all know that, if you want, uh, uh, you know, are the buildings to be brick? Can it be brick and block? Are they gonna be brick and stone and block? Are they gonna be hardy plank? Are they, you know, are, how specific, are we gonna have to, you know, build these buildings, and how many of them, and what size? Before we can tell you, we can make this work, given there's a, um, critical mass factor, I guess, is the way I look at it, that it's gotta do to make it work. We don't have to hit a home run with it, but we gotta make it feasible.
Yeah, economically feasible, so.
Right, why aren't they talking about those architectures?
We have architectures like the summer camp area.
Once we get the programming, programming done, then we can, we can figure out what that all looks like.
Okay.
It's just gonna be...
So that residential developer, based on what we're gonna ask you, we get to a point where you say, we want this kind of look, and you're, you're presenting that to a residential developer, and he's gonna say, okay, here's what it's gonna cost, but, but beyond that, it's really not gonna be on you, you're just selling the, those slots, right?
Right, we'll, we'll basically say, what can you pays for a finished block, and then we'll...
And it's gotta look like this, it's gotta be under this facade, this, this kind of look, this is what they're, we'll have our requirements as far as what the look is gonna be, he takes that into factor, and based on what he can get, and he's gonna say, okay, I can offer you X amount of dollars for each lot.
Right, and then we're gonna take, we're gonna take the, the retail office, and based on all the conversations we've had, architecture, everything else, we're gonna put a budget on that, and it's gonna be X, and then we're gonna take the cash that we got from the sales and the townhome, and we're gonna put it towards that, and we're gonna have to make sure that our rent, the rents that we can...
Make sense.
Yeah, make sense to build.
For this area.
Yeah.
And, and, and it's probably gonna come piecemeal, because you got some infrastructure as far as the village green, right up in front, and you got, would, would you look at those two as far, the first two buildings you put in? If, if we were to go with this, these would be the first two?
I think that makes the most sense, cause you're creating that, at least you're creating...
Yeah, that...
You're moving the dirt, you're creating the space, and people are starting to understand what's coming in, and, and whether you build one building or two buildings, it, you, you, I, I don't, I don't know what the numbers look like, you know?
Well, and I mean, you kinda wanna keep all that construction happening at the same time, so it's not like you're building town hall, and then you're building something on the other side, and then you're coming back, and you're doing, you know, another building after town hall's done, like, I would think you'd want all of that kind of in the same time.
Oh, yeah, you're creating the village space, the area for the town hall, the parking, and then your areas, that's all graded for the retail and everything at the beginning, and then what goes up, I mean... I, I think I know where you're at, and I understand the, the, the economics of it, um, it's what it's really gonna come down to, cause I, you know, the community buy-in, and, you know, even though it's, it technically, you can call it whatever you want, it's gonna be a residential, but, uh, a, a, a townhome, but it's, it, you know, people get scared of that, but, and it, and most likely be two-story, and maybe show some pictures, or have some pictures available, what that could look like.
Yeah.
Um, given what we've talked about with everything else, uh, town hall, what town hall's gonna look like is, is real important to it, so.
Just, just for clarity sake, just so I can make sure I'm clear, are y'all wanting the document to be an approved ordinance before we get to the point of this is the architectural standards we're looking for? Are you guys okay with us saying, conceptually, this is what we're moving towards? The reason I ask that is because we're talking about roughly a four to five month variation from the, the two of those. In, in December, we're gonna come up with some architectural design concepts that we're definitely moving forward to adopt, and it has to go through the process of the planning board and the council to actually adopt it, which isn't slated to take place until early spring. So that, that being said, um...
Would you, but would you want, would you want a commitment from the ventures that's buying on the donation of the land before those architectural elevations are approved? You know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah.
Are we gonna know, are we gonna know what we're, what was required of us here? I mean, I think there's a, there's, there is a handshake. Push me to the door.
Nick him, nick him.
I think there's a handshake here, that if you guys can get comfortable with a certain amount of programming here, and the community can, that they're, and, and you're willing to put in some of the infrastructure that we've talked about, there's a willingness to donate the land to, to the town, the village to do this.
Yeah.
I think that's a, that's a, that's a handshake, I think, that we can, you can...
We, we can work with, I've heard from neighbors, um, told me, don't give me anything, charge them a ton of money for it. I got that feedback from my side. No, and I know other people, and Joe said, eh, no town has us no way. It's gotta be some kind of compromise here, if we, if we do, do something, um, with it for a town hall, and I'm, I'm willing to. You know, and it's, uh, and I, I feel like, I, I, I feel like it's a, it could be a very great place for Marvin, but a little bit of the easel feature handprint on it, that we had a little something to do with it, y'all got, y'all done all the work, but it'd be something that would provide it, would make it a destination, it wouldn't be just flying through here around a few roundabouts. So, you know, and, and your town hall would be something you'd be proud of, and be a place to get to put, but I can't just go give it to you, and then in the hopes that maybe someday, I don't, I've been to a few mayors down here, I guess, is what I'm saying, I, I, this ain't, you know, George, I, I brought him on a few times, trying, trying to explain it, so I think, I think the time's right, I don't know how many cars have gone by here this afternoon, but, but there's a lot, and you got some capable people here. So, I, I don't know how committed I can get without, you know, show you my cards and show y'all, you know, show me yours, or whatever, so, is that fair?
I, I, I guess, the way I look at this is, what is the domino effect, too? Cause we have this heritage district, and some people have some land, and, you know, if we do this, well, we're approaching, the way I look at it is, we're approaching each landowner to say, hey, will you work with us on, you know, and whatever it is? Um, it didn't work in some areas, some were just purchasing a building for it to be, this is now bringing in, the advantage you have in this case, I look at it as, okay, we see it as you're, you're getting some residential homes that is allowing you to fund the, the, all these other landowners along this heritage, are they gonna ask for that down the road? I don't know, and is that gonna be, is, is that gonna affect us at all? And I, I don't know, because we don't, we don't know what everything looks like along this heritage district, and these few landowners here, I know there's some that are out of play, because they're already, there are homes built on it. What is across the street gonna want? What is Mr. Lett gonna want? What is Mr. Odell gonna want when, when we do this? Cause we're, we're offering this, does that, and, and, and thinking out loud, does it have any domino effect on the whole thing? And, uh, it's a fair discussion, but it's an opportunity for you to say, hey, we can, we can get some residential, we can get some source of funding to help with this, but I, I'm looking at it as big picture, what does it bring to the community? How does it, uh, create? What I think we all been looking for and trying to get, and it's, it's, you know, I just, I just wanna lay that out there to say, and I'm, I'm not going into this blind, saying, oh, we're only gonna do this for them, I have to consider, or I think the councils and, and other things have to consider, okay, what else is available on here? Is there gonna be an ask, if you will?
That's why I'm phrasing it like, so they would characterize their property differently than the rest, and that, that, that's kind of, uh, it's kind of a way to, to not have a zoning that's different, but still allow us to give, you know, like, say, give them one point one and give everyone else one point oh, without, um, like, without being cheap or anything to the rest of the property, if that makes sense?
Yep.
Okay.
Did you, did we answer it?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, I mean, I think, as soon as you guys can figure out your programming, then I think we can figure out the rest. The architecture will come at a time, we'll figure that out, we'll work together and say, this works or not, I'm not, I think the main thing is just the uses, the density, where buildings are located. And just, and dovetailing, dovetailing the membrane of understanding between us and the village, but also to donation of land, infrastructure, who's doing what, that, that gets consummated at one time. When, when the final deal is, is, you know, is worth, effectively, if you will.
Good, so we got more fun already to do, so as we, as we...
I have some questions before we're done, so, too.
Okay, go.
Okay, thank you.
You have some questions?
Yeah, I have some questions, I have some comments when I saw this plan too. I think, uh, something that we really didn't touch on, that we really should have, is the buffers in the back, that was a really important part of the public input process, that, uh, people who live here in Marvin currently don't wanna suddenly be adjacent to commercial, um, and so we came up with this subzone map here, that put the commercial only in the front of the property. Um, this is not adopted yet, um, but it is in the land use plan that's set to be adopted in, in very shortly. Um, so my, uh, I guess my recommendation, when I drew up, when I drew up my comments, was to kind of, uh, rotate the, the, the programming here, where, um, your retail, this building could go here, this specialty store could go there, and then these houses could go back there, so that you have that commercial in the front, residential in the back, and then a buffer of maybe like fifty or a hundred feet, um, really needs to bring home the fact that the people who live in three pond acres are, you know, are not gonna be adjacent to something very drastically different than what they are now. That's all I have.
That's all, just changing my location or...
Yeah.
Just moving some things around.
Right, and so you don't really have to change the programming, uh, the programming itself, just the orientation of it, to, um, I guess, to be consistent with our land use plan.
Are we okay having parking spaces back there?
Um, parking should also not be in the buffer, but stormwater is fine.
Cause parking adds, you put lighting in there, and that lighting sometimes affects these adjacent areas, and keep in mind, if you put it in front, it, it affects the homes across the street.
But, no, but what I'm saying is, on the backside, not in that green buffer zone.
Where, which one?
You need a little, I'm gonna get you a laser pointer, so we're gonna get it for Christmas.
Is it okay to have the parking here?
Um, if...
Not here, but here.
Right, right. If you were to switch, kind of like rotate this whole program, the parking might more so belong down here as well, maybe some on the other side of this, uh, internal street.
But if, what I was talking about is getting rid of these, these
Right.
residential units and putting a, another retail space there, you're flipping it and putting those residential here, which that can't happen if you're gonna have you're, you're saying that there's no retail up here. saying that there's no retail up here. Can you have parking up here?
Oh yeah, you can have parking back there, yes, yes, sorry, sorry. Yes, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question until you said it that way.
So, so, so we're not, from the road, you're not seeing the parking.
Well, that's kind of like my thought process.
And, you know, you have the retails up closer to it, so you know what's in there and then you drive in there to find your parking, if you will. So it gets changed around a little bit and then those homes that are up in front there, some of them could be switched for a retail or put in the back, along, right where the 20,000.
Right.
Uh, in that, in that, or there's some on that side.
Oh yeah, I guess you could do that and...
You could take that 20,000, where that 20,000 building and put the townhomes there, right?
Yeah, or you could put, you could put it here and take these and put those up there.
Right. So you're seeing the retail part of it, when you get into there, the residential's in the back.
For the buffer.
We can look at, we can look at, I mean, I think, you know, that, we're accustomed to build, having a, a nice landscape buffer between our properties residential, and we design, we can put in our zoning documents that any parking lot lighting won't be higher than X feet, we'll have half a foot candle or less at the property line, so it doesn't, there's things we can do to mitigate that impact, but...
Point four property line.
So, was that?
Point four at the property line.
Twenty-four feet of?
No, point four foot candles.
Oh, got it, yeah.
Yeah, what I don't want is what you see over at, where you see over at Coles, where you're actually driving along railroad and you're seeing the backs of the building.
Right.
Okay, so if you're going to put retail front, that front, what that looks like is everything. Again, to do four sides is very expensive from a build standpoint, but, you know, how that all looks on, on all sides is, is, I guess, to some extent, you know, and, and there's a cost associated with everything you want to do, again.
All right, so, so we got to rotate it per whatever our Landes Plan is.
Yeah, the Landes Plan is about to be adopted, you know, it shows the commercial in the front only.
All right, what else?
Uh, the buffers, that's all I have.
Sorry, go ahead, sure, sorry.
That, that plan has been approved by planning and is counting?
It'll be adopted November 10th.
It's going to be adopted November 10th?
Well, it may be adopted.
Well, it's, it's going to be a public hearing before it, yeah.
I actually was thinking to recommend, uh, considering it to be on the consent agenda for December, so that you can look at the final version before you adopt it, if there's any revision.
I don't know, why aren't we looking at it tomorrow?
No, no, I mean, we're not looking at it tomorrow, but November 10th is...
No, that's my point, why aren't we looking at it tomorrow?
Because we have to hold the public, have to hold a public hearing according to law.
Yeah, so why don't we look at it tomorrow?
It has to be advertised for two full weeks.
Well, we could just look at it without the public hearing, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Can you guys let me talk?
Yeah.
Please?
Yeah.
We can look at it tomorrow, we were supposed to have this ready last meeting to discuss and vote on it, so we should all be ready to talk about it tomorrow, discuss it, the public hearing can be held on the 10th or whatever the date is and we can vote on it then.
Yeah, yeah.
We can add it to the work session.
Thank you.
And that, um, that distance of blue from the right away, what, what, is that?
Roughly 300 feet. It could be more or less, depending on, um...
Is that, is that flexible in the, in the Landes adoption of it or is it, is it?
Um, yeah, it's not explicitly stated in the Landes Plan as 300 feet, but that's what is in the draft zoning for this, this district. This, this even still says possible, so, I mean, everything is, like, you could, you could propose something that's not consistent with this, but then the council would have to make an inconsistency statement when they approve it and that's, that's tough.
It's not a good way to start with the way the Landes Plan. I understand.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Bob, do you have anything?
No, I don't, I'm good.
Rupit, you said you had a couple of things, what else?
Yeah, those are a couple of things, the Landes Plan, putting commercial in the front and having buffers, like more buffers in the back.
Nice. All right, so we're going to do our work on our end. And then Take that, Andy. Then, uh, we'll have our meetings and then we'll get, uh, we'll get back up with you guys and kind of let you know where we are, what we figured out. Is that good?
Yeah, thank you.
Well, of course.
All right, and then, uh, just, I was going to communicate with Christine, any questions pop up in the meantime?
Yeah.
Or Rupit and, uh, we'll just kind of go from there. When's the meeting for?
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday is the committee?
Yeah, next Thursday at 7:00 PM.
Okay. All right. So we have to somehow, I don't know, we're recording this, just make sure that both Andy and, and Jamie.
The recording will be available today on the website.
Or listen in, just so we don't have to spend the time to bring them up this big and, you know, and they may come up with some questions and obviously we'll hear from...